Welcome, it's 6:15 here on Tuesday evening. And first thing we're gonna do, we're gonna skip a few things and we're gonna do the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award.
Excellent. All right, with us tonight, I have Gabe Jones Thompson. Where Thompson? Why don't you come on up here, Gabe? I was able to, I'm gonna end up sitting to read this, so I don't sway. But with Gabe tonight, his mother, Teresa Jones, and his father, Dwight Thompson, here. So, can we just talk a little bit about Gabe? Yeah, we'll sit. I can make a stand and he'll, that's how we do it at the awards banquet in the, at up at Tech. You're not gonna have to sit there while you get talked about. All right. During Gabe's years here at Frontier Regional, he has maintained maximum honors and has a 4.6 GPA. Gabe has challenged himself by taking rigorous courses of study, including AP English, AP Computer Science, AP Chemistry, and at times he's had to create his own path. An example of this is his course of study of mathematics. Gabe first took Algebra I in middle school, and then he took Honors Geometry as a freshman at Frontier Regional. Then he was able to skip Algebra II and go straight into pre-cal at GCC over the summer, to come back in the fall to take AP Calculus as a sophomore. The following summer, Gabe explored applications of math in a quantum physics course as part of a Harvard pre-college program. In Gabe's junior year, he took AP Statistics at Frontier while studying Calculus II on his own. The following summer, Gabe took Calculus II officially at UMass, which allowed him to take multiple variable calculus this fall. So, as you can see, when we can't provide the course, he went out and found his own course. It's a real showing of the kind of academic Gabe pursues. Outside the classroom, some of Gabe's many activities include playing guitar for the Rockin' Red Hawks. He's also a member of the varsity basketball team that just won the league title. I heard you had a great game last night. Coaches the Ultimate Frisbee Club, performs in the Drama Club productions, tutors, and volunteers for the Junior Olympic and referees basketball in the area of Booth programs. Karen Ziomick, Gabe's guidance counselor. And now we're talking about Gabe. Karen told me, "Gabe has qualities that take him beyond a good student and community member. He's a genuine kindness and caring that is framed by his humble demeanor not seen in many students." She went on to say that she checked that box. That box that you check on a college application that says, "One of the top few students I've encountered in my career." And Karen Ziomick has been in our district for many, well over 20 years, so to check that box is a significant statement about Gabe. So, that is impressive. When I spoke to his AP English teacher, Melissa Strokey, she commented on his level of learning and how Gabe approached learning. She said, "Even if the task was not enjoyable, he would bring humor and energy and 110% effort." It glimpsed at Gabe's personality, which is fun, creative, and humorous. We had a poetry slam at Frontier. We had one each year at Frontier. We also use Membeam at Frontier. And Membeam is a vocabulary skills software that students use in high school. And you can just imagine a vocabulary, you can imagine what that looks like and how that, some way these students may not, it's not popular to all students. Gabe decided to perform an approachy slam in front of the entire school about Membeam using the sophisticated vocabulary it pushes on students, and he brought down the house. A clever pushback to a task he didn't love, but by applying humor and energy, Gabe made it fun for all. I was thinking about Gabe and his great attributes as a person, when I suddenly it hit me. Gabe is a young man of great character. You see all those people who are out there who are successful, the sports stars, the actors, the directors, the CEOs, and all you think of those people could just use a little bit of character. Good character is an attribute that is difficult to teach, but my eyes have appreciated the most. We are sad to see leave Gabe at Frontier Community as a student next year, and I've recently learned he's been extended to Haverford College in Pennsylvania. So, Gabe, I want to congratulate you on the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. Well, congratulations. Just a hard young man, and just what we try, what we do, all our hard work, to see you take advantage of. I've already gave him the words, there's no, but thank you.
Congrats.
And congratulations, both of you. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna approve the minutes from January 7th, please.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? We're gonna hold off on the financial statement for a little bit. Public comment? Student Council?
Hi, I'm Maddie, I'm from Student Council, and last Friday, we had a roundtable at the Blue Bonnet Diner where we met with other schools in Western Mass, and we talked about how we can improve our student council. And we came back with many, many, many ideas about how we can make our student council just more involved in the whole school, and we really look forward to implementing those ideas.
So, anything coming up that we should know about?
Um, we are trying to do a fundraiser to help those affected in the Australian wildfires, and we're starting that up hopefully mid-March.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna jump right into some unfinished business, capital plan update?
All right. We have multiple people on the committee, does the committee want me to report?
Sure.
All right. So, the capital planning committee has done quite a bit of work, and we're kind of, this is kind of exciting, and I really do mean it this way, because it's kind of like the first fruit of all the labor that we started about 18 months ago doing. Which should I start with? Let's start with the track. So, last week, we interviewed, obviously they got approved money, approval for the loan for the money for the track, and so we've been looking for architects and designers. We interviewed three last week, Activitas, Malone and McBroom, and Berkshire Design Group. And we've selected one to move forward, and while this committee has given the subcommittee the job to oversee the capital improvement and the projects, we never really officially took the vote to say that we should be doing, that the committee has the authority to do that. So, it'll be on the next committee's agenda, because by the time I talk to the attorney and such about this, but he did recommend that tonight we vote, that we vote the group that we chose, we chose Berkshire Design Group, to oversee the architecture of the track.
You will not be disappointed.
What's that?
You will not be disappointed.
Glad to hear that.
All three, all three of them were, the three we interviewed were all strong.
Yeah.
And we went back and forth on our final two, and it was good, it was a good conversation between the group that we had there, and just the home, the homebody, being close, just made everybody, once we talked about it, felt really good about choosing them.
Two interactions with them doing things for the water department in Wheatley, and they are fast, and they are efficient, and they are thorough, and you will not be disappointed.
And they did well on the format that we set up, which, you know, we decided that we weren't gonna do the presentation format, we didn't want the engineers just to talk to us.
Yeah.
So, we worked out ahead of time, detailed questions, and I thought they really did a good job of, you know, getting the information that we needed, and the questions allowed the differences between them to rise, and we could talk about what we saw that was different, what we liked. Thought it was, it was a great process.
Did they actually put a big price out? Were you able to compare prices, or was it just really more on?
So, this is where it gets, it gets difficult, is so when we review the nine submittals to begin with, in order to figure out pricing, you gotta look at percentages that they used in their last project, because we don't know what the actual cost of our project is. We don't know, because they're gonna have to go out and do, they're gonna do board testing to see what the, what's happening underneath the surface, they're gonna, you know, a lot of different kinds of things, and also what we're asking for in particular, they're gonna have to come up with all that and then come up with a plan, and that's gonna then drive the cost of the project, and then they have a percentage of that. So, you know, they were well within where we thought the range for the past projects they've done is, so all that's gotta be worked out in contracts, and that's really the next step after, I've already been on, I had a phone call conversation with them to let them know that it's not official yet, but they can start to make room in their calendars because this board votes it moving forward, you know, we'll officially start to put a contract together.
And just to fault, so you go by like the percentage and previous things, but what they charge is based on an hourly rate schedule that they provide. So, one of the advantages to them is that they're headquartered in Northampton, whereas the other one, which was a Connecticut outlet with a satellite office in Springfield, and the other one was Dedham. So, when you, when you just think, and you're paying them.
Paying post to post.
Exactly, exactly. So, that was part of it, and also, we had, the committee had talked about using Andrea Woods from FurCog to do a lot of the procurement stuff, or a lot of the bidding management stuff for going down, and her hourly rate, that because it's, the county government for us would be less than what the engineers would charge for similar work, so we want, so, and they had extensive experience working with her, which is gonna lower the cost of the project for us, and everybody's happy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we're at the phase that we should authorize the subcommittee to proceed to the next phase, and authorize the chairman to sign, sign the contractor after, contract after review, reviewing set, and do negotiations if necessary to do this.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna pass around, this is a little bit about them, in case you're obviously interested in them, but you kinda looked through this case.
You can add the name Berkshire Design to it, if you want.
We should authorize the subcommittee to.
The next phase, authorize the chairman to sign after the attorney reviews the contract. One of the gentlemen the other night, actually lives in Sunderland, I'm not sure what his car, is it first name Carlos? Very, very sharp, I mean, they were all sharp. You know, the ones from Connecticut and Springfield, they came with a four-person show, and they put it on quite well and stuff, but we just felt, after talking, like I said, the second time around, we had a little talk and stuff, I really thought they were for our best interest and stuff, where they were gonna say, "There's no way possibly that you would get it done this spring, it could be a fall project for the track," where the other ones were, "Oh, no, we could, you know, we could get it done." Because we're probably about three, we're about three to four months late getting in the paperwork and the bids and all that stuff, for it to get it done this spring, summer type of day.
So, yeah, so the, as Bob was just saying, the one thing we did learn is that it's gonna be a tight window to get it done this, either summer or fall. It still may be possible, and I talked to him on the phone earlier, like I said, earlier this week, I talked to him on the phone about, they said, "What's the timeframe you wanna go with?" I said, "Well, let's kinda map up and see what the two look like." The problem is, there's only, the number of contractors that do this type of work, I mean, they're loading up their, their bids are going out, are out there right now, through, they said you wanted it done by March, you know, on bidding by March, because they're loading up their, their late spring, summer schedule, and then on top of the sub base work, there's only a few, fewer companies that actually lay down that, the topping, the rubber surface there. And so, yeah, get on their timeline as well. So, will we make it through this summer and fall? I don't know, it might be pushed for one year, but we're gonna be, we're gonna look at both and see what the best option is.
How many lanes?
Part of what they're gonna be looking at is to see whether it can be expanded a little bit, or from what, what's it, eight lanes now, six lanes now, it's eight lanes?
No, they're not changing the, they're not changing the width of the track. They're looking at the, they call them the D zones.
Yeah, that's what they're like.
Which is like, right now, to do the running high jump, you have to actually run on the track, and it costs where in that particular portion of the track, so they're just gonna say, they give us some options about if we moved it, and then obviously price it with those options, just the track, again, you're making the track last longer, and then looking at the other running long jump and pole vault as well. I mean, those are just, for those who don't know, been there, look at, they're just strips, but, you know, making sure that, you know, let's look at the whole project, we don't wanna spend the money now, then four years down the road, say, "Well, we need another 25,000 to fix this and do that on the track."
So, does it move the location of where, because right now, you know, whole.
That's, that's what they're gonna figure out, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I wanna share with you the fact that I asked that we look, the committee look at the possibility of running a sewer line.
What's that?
Out to that area so that we can install rest homes, and putting units on all tracks, so that we try to take care of the people that, you know, out there, because it was brought up at the board three or four months ago about the, you know, the sort of food, and we don't have sewer out in that area. Sewer aren't pleasant, so we'd have to get needsmen through the town, which I don't think is a problem, to get it, and, well, Enzick's house used to be down in the inn, next to the railroad track, I assume there's a sewer connection there, but it might be more than.
Right in front of the school.
Yeah. So, well, you don't wanna dig a black copy of that. But, anyway, I asked to have, to get an idea, so that we at least look forward, is this gonna be a four-year horizon?
We've been talking about that, getting facilities out there for a long time, because Sandy, Kansas, sometimes they're right, you know, so, you know.
And not very.
No, you know, and we can look at that as well, but it's, again, it's not the idea of, you know, adding to the, see what we can do within the scope of this project and.
We just don't know how much, how much the core, the core samples and all, all three of the people, they talk about doing cores, you know, drilling a hole right in the middle of the track in six to, six to 12 different locations, and looking at the core and see what the ground looks like underneath the asphalt and stuff, so that was, that will tell you an idea of how much it's gonna cost. You know, if it just removed the asphalt, and your base is good, you know, maybe we could think about using the money for what Bob was talking about, possibly.
Maybe just put it in as an alternate, obviously, because you've got the money to do it, you know, we should think about it. But, we don't wanna go through and dig it up later.
Right. So, Bob has a motion on the floor, and we have a seconded by Phil. Wanna read that again, please?
To authorize the sub, to authorize the sub, authorize the subcommittee to authorize the chairman of the school committee to sign the contract for Berkshire Design Group after review by our attorney.
I mean, it's gonna take some negotiation, but, you know, it's the next phase, but you're authorized to sign it once the committee buys into it. Speed the process of getting it to the point.
All in favor?
So.
Anything, are you still talking?
Yeah, I'm still gonna go and read the phase two, what we talked about. So, we've had two meetings last week with the budget, I mean, the capital improvement subcommittee. The other one was to look at, you know, as we talked about, the three phases, one is obviously with the loan, the X one is, what are we gonna use for E and D? We talked about a third, a third, a third, a third to put down the assessments, a third to hold, and a third to use toward backlog projects, building improvements. So, what you have in front of you is what was recommended by the capital improvement subcommittee.
Let's get away.
No, she, she let go of it and it flew off the chair.
Spent a lot of weight.
And so, basically, what we're looking to do is not really spend a full third of the E and D, but the E and D funds is the list here for $115,676. But basically, to go through two of the items I talked about earlier this year, we had emergency issues of having to replace the gym curtain, and then I, whether you call it an emergency or not, I thought that bleachers, there were seats that were broken, and I would consider them dangerous if you were in a crowded gym, if you were gonna go to sit down in a seat that doesn't exist. But those we had repaired in the middle of the basketball season. And then, looking at the lockers for the middle school, as you know, when the central office moved in and took over a wing, and we wanna move those, we're not gonna actually move those lockers, because it's actually less expensive to buy new lockers and install them up here on the second floor where their classrooms are. Another bank, because right now, they're really tight. You have every kid going to every locker, and you've seen those thin lockers that are, you know, not great, but it's, we wanna, another bank of those put up, up here on this wing here, so that's what that's for. So, that's really a program thing, a real need, sustained by George and Scott. The batting cage in the gym has been long overdue to be replaced. It's actually kind of a hazard to hang up each year, and it's got enough holes in it now, it's not stopping any baseballs or softballs. The vinyl stair treads, we actually, that number was on there originally for, in the low 30s, 32,000. They, the material that we did the middle stairwell, if you've taken that up and down, they have that material on sale, because it's the whatever, and they said, "If we buy that now, we can get it a discounted rate," and that's with that installed. The gym floor for $35,000, gym floor is overdue to be refinished, so it'll be refinished and repainted. Right now, the, the number of changes in the different games from volleyball to basketball, the lines going every which way, the floor needs to be, needs to be sanded down and coated so many times, it's starting to peel up and chip up in different areas, and then needs to be repainted and be done, kind of, I don't wanna say up to game code, which would take down for the majority of the different sports and that kind of thing, so getting that part there. Gym lockers, this is the boys' room right now, the girls' room is in better, is in far better shape. Boys' room over the years, about a third of the lockers aren't operative, another third of the lockers are this big, you can probably put a swimsuit in there, maybe a towel, but we don't have a pool, so I don't know why they, I don't know why they have that there. So, I mean, really, you couldn't, you couldn't put two sets of sneakers, at least a growing child-sized sneakers, in there. So, that's replacing the lockers in that room. Radios, currently administration and different one-to-ones and different people throughout the building carry radios for emergencies during the school day. They're not like the Motorola's, you can buy it for 30 bucks, they're actually a couple hundred bucks a piece, and this is to replace the whole fleet of them and get them up to... I was looking over here, George, if you have to jump in, but that was a kind of a priority for George, because good communication is important. So, those right there, you got a sub coal, we did a 10% contingency, just in case any one of those lines went over for any reason. I would suspect most of those lines are gonna come in under, because a lot of those were conservative estimates, conservative on the sense of giving you larger numbers so that we, you know, we go over. So, basically, what I'm looking for this evening is a, is approval there, to so they can, can alert the towns, you know, the rules regarding E and D, that we're going to spend it, I gotta let them know, and they'll have, the select boards will have 30 days to take action. Since the select, there was a select board member from all four towns at this meeting, I don't assume that the whole reason we put this kind of process together, I assume it'll be pretty smooth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to notify the boards of select four towns that we want to vote, $150,676 of the excess and efficiency account to be used this year.
Second.
I have a question. On any of these, do we have to get three bids?
Anything, anything over $50,000 requires three, it calls a sealed bid process, a sealed bid process. Everything else is going to be under, if we use the, it's not a sealed bid process, there's another process for it.
But do we have to get?
They're gonna be, no, we're gonna have to get quotes.
Quotes.
We're gonna have to get quotes from verified vendors.
Okay.
Unless we use a state contractor, and then we don't have to get three quotes.
We got a first and a second to notify the select boards from all towns about the E and D that we wanna use. Anybody have some questions?
By using E and D, what kind of shape would it be, after it's used?
So, you'll see tonight that right now, we have a certified E and D of just over $500,000. We're looking at using $200,000 to knock down the assessments, and that's what we used last year, and then you're talking about another just over $100,000 there, so leave us in the mid, 200 and something thousand, is, is basically where we were a few years ago. Our E and D was a little bit higher this year, we were very conservative last year, as we know through, we had concerns going through the budget season, that, you know, we were very conservative on a lot of different areas, and also, a lot of these projects we held off on, and so, knowing that this was coming forward, so, so we'll be in a healthy spot, and then I hope to have that, we'll be replenishing some of the E and D by having some savings from this year.
Any other questions? All in favor?
The third column, the other project, that's why I said, it was exciting, and so, these are a lot of small, little nagging projects that are just, when we, when we do them, it's just gonna improve so much around this program. The next one is, these are three other projects in the building that the committee wants to bring forward to send to the town for town warrant. There is no, remember that the, although we have the ability to take a loan, we're not taking the loan in this fiscal year coming up, so there's no, there's no assessment to the loan that we're doing, I call it the big six projects, the track, parking lot, the roof, and carpeting and that kind of stuff. Those aren't gonna be started in the next fiscal year, so there's no assessment this coming year. So, we're looking at doing three projects, these, and we put these on here because of the price range, we want it to be under $50,000, and they're very simple to understand, in the sense of, the first one's the electronic door holds, we have many doors in this building that are ADA compliant or fire compliant, as the two conflict, they're using wood stops to hold open corridors, so that handicapped students can get through them. They should be all on electronic holds, and why they weren't originally, I don't know what the, what was, I don't know if those doors were put in afterwards or whatnot, but basically, they open and shut based on the fire alarm, so that we stay within fire code, but we are ADA compliant, so that's the wiring of that. The central clock system and the intercom system, it's basically gonna probably fall under the same vendor, but our clocks are different in every room, and if you're running a school, that's a problem, and so we've been kind of limping along with that. Our, also, our intercom system, there are certain areas of the building in outdoors where it's no longer works, and that is obviously a safety hazard, and especially if you have to do things from alerting, notifying, that kind of stuff, to be able to communicate the entire building. So, again, it's an age system, but those are the, those are the three items to go to, and if you flip your page over, double sided page, it's broken out, I basically did this, I stole language from a previous article, the CACAB, so, and then just basically, those would be the assessment, the assessed cost and allocated cost each term. So, not a lot, but just enough to keep us moving on that pile of things we need to get going as well.
We did put a contingency for these on four items.
We did.
The central clock and the intercom, is that like what we did in Wheatley, similar system?
It's a central clock, yes, yes, same idea.
That Scott Paul did it, right? I mean, he set it up and stuff.
Yes, yes, yeah, I don't know if it's gonna be the same system, that's why I can't answer that, but yes, absolutely, improving the, they had the same problem, the clocks weren't working. We will go analog clock.
I think, though, Gabe, to go, will you ask our new facilities director, Billy Eldridge, he, he was really, I thought he was really on top of this.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
He was quite confident of the numbers and all that, so.
For a short word.
Who to propose, Eric?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
And I just, on closing on that, I just gotta say, there's a lot of work of this committee, and it's good to see, there's a lot of, as I said to Bill, it's exciting, but it's a lot of work coming down the line, a lot of these small projects that we push down the road, we're gonna clean them up, and that's a good thing. So, thank you.
So, Bill, what do you have for us tonight?
We have. This iteration number one, or this iteration number two? Two. Anyway.
Do you have some handouts?
Yeah.
I do.
Shelley has the copies of the budget, and.
If you were in the subcommittee meeting, only need copies of the assessment.
Yes. There's the assessment page, copies of the budget, and there's an analysis that goes on top of it. We're, I know this is kind of an odd, I was thinking to ask you guys to vote on a budget, but here it is. Can you vote on this? So, we need, we kinda, what we're looking to do as a subcommittee is adopt a tentative budget figure for tonight, so we, when we go to talk, we gotta begin to speak to the select and the finance committee, the end of this month or the first week of March, one or the other. And it's, it's hard to, to give them something that you guys haven't at least had an opportunity to put, a sort of a, at least a pencil signature, you know, so that's why we're calling it a tentative figure at this time, so we have something to take forward to them, plus, the public hearing is scheduled, I believe, for March 4th, so we need to.
Third.
Okay. It's hard to have a public hearing on, on something that you haven't voted on either, so, in that particular, we're not trying to spring this on you, but if you look at it, you'll probably, you'll be okay, you, I, you'll be okay with it compared to other years, and Shelley will explain the ins and outs of it, but, you know, I, I think a little indulgence, if you'll just, we'll go through this, and she'll explain the whole thing to you, and that, and that's why we're asking you to vote a tentative figure tonight, so we have something a little bit more solid to take up on the roadshow. It's all yours.
Thanks. 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 Um, so what I've given you is a full budget, shows line by line, every expense category within the budget, and then there is a summary narrative page as well, so I'm going to go through the summary, kind of read through it, stop me if you have questions, I do talk a little bit fast, but if you need something explained, just interrupt, and I'm happy to slow down or start over. So we're looking at an increase of two point eight four percent for Frontier next year, which equates to three hundred and twenty-six thousand, forty-five dollars. Total local budget of one million, seven hundred, ninety-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven. So to build this, we took into consideration expenditures over the last three years, and looked at the actuals, and adjusted any lines up or down as they needed to be, um, and then also took input from principals and department heads in regards to operational and programmatic needs and wants. Um, we've also included wage increases for IAs and teachers based on their contracts, as well as any non-union personnel, meaning central office staff, custodians, secretaries, principals, um, any other administration. Uh, so, the general fund, um, is not the only funding source for Frontier, we also have revolving funds, so we're looking at a total, including our revolving funds, total operating budget of twelve point five million dollars next year. Um, and those alternate funds, the revolving funds are als- also included in the complete budget workbook. I'm going to highlight here the changes to the general fund. Some of the comments that are on here don't impact only the locals, so I'm giving you, for example, the overall increase in teacher salaries, that is looking to be at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, or two point nine-nine percent increase for our teachers next year. Some of our teachers are funded from other funding sources, whether it's special education revolving, early childhood revolving, so that's not all a direct hit to the local budget, um, but overall, just didn't want to make you aware of the increase. Same thing for instructional assistants, we're looking at a twenty-six thousand dollar increase overall, or four point seven percent. Now, those increases are higher than the contract amount, because teachers and IAs are also stepping, so it's the cost of living in the contract plus a step, if they're moving up a step, um, so you're not getting that flat two percent that was the contract rate there. Uh, the next few lines are adjustments based on actuals from the prior three years, so our substitute line, we are increasing by five thousand, five hundred, and then summer salaries by five thousand, that is because those lines have been over-expended in prior years, and then we added three thousand dollars to cover consultation services for special education needs. Instructional hardware and software, we increased these two lines by sixteen thousand, eight hundred. This is so that the IT department can begin an annual rotation and replacement of Chromebooks and Smartboards, which are student devices and classroom devices, um, so that will be something that's recurring in the budget year to year versus, uh, one-time expenditure. Uh, we have a new keyless entry system, you all know that, we, that was funded through the grant this year, but we do expect that there's always some unforeseen maintenance to those types of new systems, so we added fifteen hundred dollars to cover any unforeseen maintenance costs there. Maintenance of grounds, we increased slightly by fifteen hundred, based on actuals from the prior three years. We increased custodial wages by five thousand dollars to account for summer and overtime, again, that was also looking at the actual expenditures from prior three years. Our retirement assessment with the Franklin Regional Retirement System is up by forty-one thousand dollars due to, um, an increase in our assessment. We have an increase of forty-five thousand dollars in employee separation costs, which covers the sick buybacks or retirements. Our non-employee insurance has increased by four thousand dollars, that includes insurance such as workers' comp, liability, et cetera, um, for potential inflation, those premiums always go up year to year. There's also wage increases and adjustments included for the non-union personnel. And then just a reminder, um, if you remember, a few months back, the subcommittee had a special meeting to discuss the FY twenty budget, because we found that there were quite a few expenditures not included, um, properly, not funded properly for FY twenty, so we did have to absorb those back into the local budget. Some of those included, uh, the clerical staff, the salaries were not in there properly for FY twenty, we were missing fees for our auditor, uh, our trash removal increased, and then, um, building and testing, there were some other minor accounts as well, but we've accounted for all of those, um, in a funding source for FY twenty-one. Any questions so far?
On the increase, is that a line item, forty-five thousand dollars to cover retirement?
Um, it's just increasing the line item, the line item has always existed, but we are expecting that to grow next year. Based on the retirements that we know of.
Will that go up and down every year?
Yeah. It depends on who retires.
Okay.
Uh, so we do have a few additions to the local budget, um, we did have the principal and the, um, curriculum director request, uh, English teacher, and the addition of a VCBA, which is a board-certified behavior analyst, um, those are coming in at mid-level range on the teacher salary schedule. George, I would let speak to those two positions if you do have more specific questions about the addition of those, because it is an addition of two full positions. And then, uh, we also had to move a teacher off of the SED revolving account due to a change in the, um, tuitions coming in for students into our, our special ed program. We split fund it, so that half of her salary is coming back to the local budget for next year, and half of it will be funded from other sources, so that it's not fully absorbed. So it's a, a add of two and a half teaching positions to the local budget next year. One of them already exists, the employee already works here, we're just changing her funding source into our brand-new positions. Have any questions about that? Uh, and then I wanted to give you a short list of changes that allowed us to cover some of these increases, so we are reducing from thirteen to ten IAs next year, based on the needs of our students in classrooms. Um, we're also moving one IA, uh, to be funded from the SED revolving account, so that was a reduction of eighty thousand dollars to the local budget, so that's helping offset the salary increases, as well as the increases that I talked about above. Uh, we have a decrease in employee insurance by four thousand dollars, there was a one-time insurance adjustment in FY twenty that we had to pay out to our employees, certain employees that fell within that contract, um, so that was a one-time expense that we were able to pull off the budget. And then our out-of-district placement, uh, we have students that will not be going out of district next year, whether they've aged out or, um, you know, are no longer in our program, and that's a reduction of fifty thousand dollars to the budget, based on student needs. And then what I gave you there, just for a reference point at the bottom, is so that you can see what the increases are by a percent, so if we're looking at one, two, three, or four percent increase to the budget, um, you can see what each percentage point cost addition to.
I was looking at all the ones that we increased over here, and I always remember the ones where you have a increase, and you would have a couple of decreases, and I'm saying, where are the decreases? And I finally see down the bottom this little list down here, they're big, okay? But we never, we're never able to have as many positive add-ons as I see this year.
I mean, I think it's interesting the way the budget's been presented differently over the last three years, you know, with three different, um, business managers, and it's also a way, the way some different people approach looking at budgets, because like, we could also spell out each IA position at the value it is, instead of combining it all together, you know, those kind of things. There's also like things for insurance, where we're adding on one end, but we're taking away on the other. Another business manager could have just also chosen, say, insurance line is, it's a watch, you know what I mean? But, um, Shelley's being very transparent about what's happening in each line item, um, as more, you know, as the, there's another sheet that was, the group looked at, that kind of broke down every single change in every single line, and she's highlighting those changes here. So, some of it is a little bit of information overload, because if we're saving on one insurance policy and paying on another, insurance is staggering, but, you know what I'm saying? So, there's some of that going on there, too.
Speaking for myself and not the rest of the committee, uh, I found it, find it quite remarkable that we had a whole bunch of holes from the mortar shells left behind by Shelley's predecessors, that we had to fill, and a couple of new initiatives on here, and we're still at two point eight percent, and I, I think, I am so glad to have budget business and business manager back in house, I can't tell you, I think you've added years to my life, probably, this last year. Last year was torture.
I have one question. Do we have sufficient money to maintain the building for the course? Because somebody asked us that question.
Meaning, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
You know, the, the, like carpets, the shampoo, the paint, and all of that, we have all those things in there, uh, I know we will do this other stuff, but what I'm saying is, the routine stuff, do we have enough money and enough help to do it?
Yeah, I thi- I think the maintenance lines are healthy, I think that, um, Bill, the new facilities director, is still getting grounded to try to figure all of that out, um, but I, I've yet at Frontier to experience instances where he's coming to me saying, we're already out of money in this maintenance line, and we need to move it, where that does happen at some of the smaller schools, because their budgets are smaller, um, so I do think we're in a good position. I, Bill was part of the budget process and looked line by line at the three-year comparison, just like George and Sarah and the rest of the department heads did, and he was able to provide input based on actuals, whether he felt like we needed to go up or down, so, you know, I think for this year, with him being new and me being new, we're comfortable, that doesn't mean that next year, he's not going to come back and say, you know what, we really actually do need five thousand more, or, you know, I think everybody's still trying to get a little bit more grounded on that.
Yeah, and so I'm going to give a different, a little bit more of a historical approach, knowing that we overspend the maintenance line year after year after year, and that's where you're kind of going at there. So, you know, we have to prioritize based on that budget line, where the, you know, if we're going to paint a wall, you know, for three grand, you know what I mean, or we're going to, you know, those kind of things, so, that maintenance line does need to grow over time, and we're not, we grow, we grow just a little bit here, we talked about the summer services, that helps with the cleaning, and some of those kind of things in the building. Um, I think it's one of those things where we are going to have to work on maintenance in general, and how we're approaching it, because we're doing a backlog of things with E and D right now, um, you know, if we, if we increase the, we, you know, we'd have less E and D, we won't be able to do the back, you know what I mean, so it's kind of like, like, what side of that scale are you giving it on?
But I don't want to hear two years from now, well, we had deferred maintenance, and we didn't do it, you know, because we supposedly identified everything that needs to be done, I just want to make sure that you get adequate funds to do.
I think that's one of the differences, is just that you have the department heads that have actually put the time in to look, to look back, and to see, and, and then to sit here and say that they're comfortable with it. I mean, last year, they gave us a budget and said, careful, this might spontaneously compice while you read it.
Well, it did. But the point is, you know, we were budgeting fifty or sixty thousand dollars for maintenance in the building, we were spending seventy-five to a hundred every year, and what we were doing is, we were spending a lot of money before June thirtieth, there was another challenge, and it was never actually being reflected in the following hours.
And that's one of the things that I'm working on, is to get things in the right spot, and we're doing that this year as a start, and we'll continue to massage it with not just, you know, central office departments, but across the school, and, I mean, I think that the feedback from George and the teachers that I've interacted with has been positive to some of the changes that the business office is trying to make, as far as the accounting records, and, you know, I feel good with this budget, and again, I think that Bill's still getting grounded, but we do have a really comprehensive capital list that, you know, has that deferred maintenance on it, so.
They don't want to get us in a trap, where we, and not properly budget for maintenance levels, because going back and getting that big borrowing organization again, is not going to be taking with any great reception. If you're happy with it, we'll look for it.
Do you have an assessment sheet?
I do, yeah. Do you, um, do you want to look at the school choice info while we're still kind of talking about this first?
Yeah, I'd as well.
Okay. Again, if you were in, um, the meeting earlier, this did not change, so you don't need this.
Choice didn't change.
So this may look a little bit different, I don't know what you received last year, um, but it likely looks different than what you've seen in the past, so I'll just walk you through some of the highlighted points here. So you can see our balance forward from FY nineteen was almost, um, I'm sorry, it was nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, and then, uh, coming into FY twenty, the net of our choice and charter, so choice and charter coming in and choice and charter going out, the net of that is three hundred thousand, so we came into FY twenty with one point three million in our, uh, school choice account. You can see our expenditures for FY twenty totaled four hundred and forty-five thousand, that includes all of the budget deficits that we had for FY twenty that, that subcommittee talked about with Darius and I previously. Uh, so our anticipated balance going into FY twenty-one is eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Our charter, um, receiving, our reimbursement is up, but our charter sending is also up for next year, those numbers are included here with school choice, so we're looking at a net of two hundred and ninety thousand, taking our balance, and then, um, that total revenue net, we're looking at one point one going into FY twenty-one, and our expenditures of FY twenty-one of just under three hundred thousand. So, going into FY twenty-two, which I know is a lot to think about, um, we're looking at having a really healthy school choice balance of roughly a hundred, I mean, eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Then we can do some partial things with school choice one, too.
Right.
Discretionary funds.
Well, you have no discretion.
No, I'm saying, this committee, its infinite wisdom, can, can decide to fund something that they need to fund.
With all, with all that's going on within the bones of this thing, they have the bottom number almost the same as the top number here. That's good.
It's a good spreader.
One more. So this is updated, so everyone should grab one of these. It is a little bit smaller print, because I wanted to get it on one page for you. The top bit of information, uh, demonstrates the general fund expenditures, the transportation expenditures, the chapter seventy-eight, the excess and deficiency credit that we're applying, the transportation reimbursement, which leaves an amount to be funded of eight point five million, the state is saying that the towns must contribute five point four million, so we're left with a balance of three million, uh, to, to be funded here. The enrollment numbers are there, and then you can go through, uh, town by town. Conway is looking at a thirty-three thousand dollar increase over last year, Deerfield is looking at a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase over last year, Sunderland is decreasing by thirty-eight thousand over last year, and Waitley is increasing by fifty-three thousand over last year. The percentages, uh, by, based on enrollment are up above as well.
We have this discussion every year about the victims of the formula, and Sunderland is a benefactor of the formula this year, and Waitley is the victim of the formula, because they have one less student from Waitley, but their assessment is up by five percent, because the state says that Waitley shouldn't be spending X amount of dollars on their kids based on having this many students from Waitley in the system, so the formula generates this, not a, not a blessed thing you can do about it. Somebody gets, somebody gets it every year, and it's, it's my turn.
It's even more diabolical.
Yeah, but we said, we said hit on the, many, 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 many.
I mean, we all say, last year, last year.
That was your turn.
And, and the EQV that they, that they determined that your chapter seventy local contribution.
Equalized valuation, because what EQV is, and that's...
Yeah, you think, you think your town has enjoyed a measure of success, whatever, you yank your candle, open up a new little manufacturing, uh, research facility with new employees in, in Waitley, or the solar farm comes online, and, but what you don't realize is that every little municipal success that you have, every little thing that generates more revenue for, that, that you end up, that ends up getting calculated against the town in the school assessment the next year, and then you end up having to pay more because your town enjoyed a tiny little bit of success.
So, how much, how much money did we get in chapter seventy versus last year? Is it miniscule?
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Okay.
I think we're not even, we do have it saved.
And Bob, what did you want to ask?
I got a couple of questions. I think the figure that we want to move is the eleven million, seven ninety-one, two seventy-one, which includes, uh, so much for the general and so much for the transportation, uh, because you vote the total budget, you don't vote the assessment, you vote the total budget.
Right.
That's not the total budget, though.
What did you say?
The total budget, the school's total operating budget is twelve, five, one, five, four, four, zero.
But we're just looking at the local here, because the local is the only contrib- is the only thing that hits the town.
This is what we have to get appropriate issue. But I have one question before we get off of this, is what is, we got to think... But I have one question before we get off of this, is what is, we got to think on the school choice money. How about the sped revolving ones? Do we have, do we know where we are on sped revolving? Is there any money there?
There is some money there, yes. There will be a surplus. It's sort of a moving target as Karen tries to figure out tuition coming in versus expense that's going out. This spreadsheet does show you the expenditures. It does not have the revenue amount on it. But we really level funded the other funding sources from '20 to '21.
And we got the aid from Medicaid reimbursements for that are also included there. I don't see any problem with budget. I'll move the 11,791,271, unless you want to move it a different way about.
Got a good question. The, I thought last year, the transportation volume.
Oh, right, transportation.
Transportation reimbursement is up for FY '21.
I mean, it's good, but how did the transportation change, go down for every day?
So the amount that the state is saying they're going to reimburse us went up. So the town's contribution for transportation is going down. So last year, 432,000 was the transportation number, and we only received reimbursement of 900, or 99,000. This year, they're saying your reimbursement is going to be $100,000 more.
And so out of the Student Opportunity Act that we heard so much noise about, we got very little from, that is the one area that they did push, that when they originally did regionalization, they were going to, they were going to refund transportation at 100%. You know what I mean? And then it happened, went to 80%, and then it went all the way down to 50-something percent at one point. They're now trying to get that number back up. So that is the one, that number is back up, and benefiting being a regional school.
Number again. Yeah, it's totally fun. Regional transportation cost across the state is another 59 million. They refuse to do that. They did, however, put 1.1 billion into the rainy day fund, so.
Would have taken 59 million to fund all of these, but they could do that, but they put 1.1 billion in the bank.
So I'm seeing here that on this summary that I gave you, because I made some changes in this today, and I changed this, which is a separate worksheet, that the total general fund is off by like 1,000. This narrative says 11,792,437,000, and this is 11,791,271,000. So it's like $1,000 that I need to reflect properly on the sheet.
Which one do you want to move?
Which one are we? We need to vote on the one that's on the narrative, 11,792. Because that's the accurate one.
11,792,437.
Second? Temp, uh, what's the word? What's the word? I lost it. The budget. No, the final, not a final, tentative budget. Proposed tentative, whatever you want to call it, but.
It's the proposed tentative budget, it's a vote. Proposed tentative maybe budget.
Bob, to answer your question earlier, so Frontier is getting 17,430 more in Chapter 78. 0.61% change.
It's a little bit. Helps.
It's not. It's a trillion-dollar initiative, 20-year initiative, truly. This is what we get.
It's made nice press, though.
Does anybody else have any question about the tentative budget?
Takes two-thirds, right? I don't think it's a problem, but we've got to make sure if it's unanimous, you get to both the quarters.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions? All in favor of the tentative budget? You ready, Ian?
Ready. Well, you're talking. I assume he's going to go for it. He moved it forward.
I'm pretty sure that.
You got a tentative?
He used to say two-thirds. I'm not sure exactly what the language is here. I think we talked about this a year ago.
We probably talk about it every year. You're the one who's supposed to remember it.
To do it unanimous is much difficult.
Just would like to congratulate the budget chefs. That's exactly what it is.
So faintless this year.
We do need to go back.
I'm just going to refer down to the check for you on the final.
First to me, would you like to talk about our current finances?
Yes, sure. I do not have the warrants. I didn't carry them. There was too many other things to carry today. So they are downstairs. Bob did go over them and asked questions of the staff if questions were needed. If anyone wants to see them, I'm happy to bring them forward after the meeting. But there were 17 warrants for review totaling $1,627,133.13. I did email out the general fund and school choice expense reports. If you look at those reports right now, you're going to see a lot of negatives because while I talk about we've moved the negative balances into school choice, I haven't actually done that change. I want to wait till we're closer to the end of the year and do it once and not have to do it again. But I am still monitoring all of those accounts. No other major changes or concerns to report at this time, unless you have questions.
I think you answered all of them. Balance, we're looking for a 3% target. So far. Okay, hey, we're doing pretty good for time. That's our fun time. We get the policies. There's a lot of them.
So.
We read, we read this month and.
Yeah, this is the first, this is the first time reading. There are, how many policies on here? So you got five, six policies, and one of them is just a procedure to a policy. Five of those policies are coming from MASC, so basically law changes. And it's one of those things where we could get the policy subcommittee to go through the law changes, but I went on a limb to say that was probably not the, what the policy subcommittee wanted to do with its time. And then the last policy is a recommendation from the administration at Frontier. So I'll go through these real quickly, and I don't. You can tell me to what detail do you want me to go through them? I mean, just do a general overview?
Can we just do a general overview?
So the educational equity policy is basically making sure that you're providing equal education to all students, and not just education, but all the offerings of your school. And that you're, you know, are charged to do that. Educational opportunities, very similar, will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admission, admissions to courses, course contents, guidance, extracurricular activities, and athletic activities. The next one is the homeless student. Of course, I put a mint in my mouth here. Homeless students enrollment and services, again, making sure that if students are being, almost all three of these, military children, the foster, children in foster care, and homeless students, basically making sure that you're not, the students not being penalized for their home situation. And a very, a very easy way to kind of do that is within, I think we talked about this in the military one. There's just some new language in there, but if you were a military child and you moved from one base to another, and you went to a new school, and all of a sudden you showed up and you're like, "Well, it's going to take you another year and a half to graduate because you didn't take all those courses." This is basically saying, you have to do your best effort to get that child through there with their peers. If the progress that child's not there, the child's fault. And the same thing has to do with foster students and homeless students, and about making your best effort to keep them, A, keep them in their main school, if they're being moved around to different housing, to keep them have that one constant in their life and that kind of stuff, not for anyone. So that's basically the, the language behind all that. So those are the ones coming from MASC. The last one is the condom policy. Currently, we do not have a condom policy on the books. And we are looking for a very straightforward one that basically says that the school be, make condoms available to students. A lot of the schools around us already have this policy. It's one of those things that, I don't know, even as the principal here, what's held us up there. The condoms will be, we'll have an indoor, internal procedure, it'll be indoor too, an internal procedure for that availability that the administration can change without having to come back, you know, for a policy change. But basically, they're going to be available in the school, the school nurse's office along with other information regarding sexual, sexual reproduction and health topics that students may need. So.
So can I ask a question about that?
You may.
So is condom use part of sex education, or is it a public health issue?
Is sex education a public health issue?
Well, I mean, if the goal is to promote condom use, is to have the maximum condom use possible, all of the things being equal, then should they not be more freely available than having to go through the process of dealing with an adult at all, number one, or dealing with a nurse in particular? I mean, should they not just be placed in baskets in the restroom? Should they not be placed in baskets outside at the front door as you're leaving? If, if the goal is to promote their use, to prevent disease, prevent pregnancies, et cetera, then, then promote their use.
You also have to promote quality control. You don't want somebody to have a basket outside.
Why not?
We're not talking about a bowl of mints at the Whately Inn when you're walking out the door.
Because, because the kids are. Because someone will vandalize them, and people will think that they're getting a quality product when they're not. And suddenly, you're looking at a whole lot of.
Or use them to vandalize.
Right.
So.
And that, I don't know whether, I mean, there's tons of data, there's tons of schools, and I mean, I did a little bit of reason, like, that was, that's always been sort of a, we tend to infantilize our, the students who say that they're not like up for that sort of responsibility. But I think that the truth is that that's, doesn't really show up in the.
It's not a responsibility issue, is what I'm talking about. It's a, I don't want someone thinking that this hasn't been tampered with when it has. It's more of the, I don't trust kids enough to leave out a box of condoms and not have somebody put pins through them.
Put a pin all in and put it back in the bowl.
But I mean, that could just as easily happen once they leave the nurse's office, or once they leave the.
And if someone goes to the nurse and gets a condom, they're probably not going to put a pin in it themselves. Could they? Of course. Have they? Yes. But could you do 30 of them at once? If you're getting them one at a time from the nurse?
Kind of clever, though.
Here's the trouble of going through.
Good thing here.
No, I'm doing.
You're on the agenda now.
Do you have parents opt-out part of the procedure? So the parents can call and say, "I don't want this if it's my child." And that's another good reason for going through the nurse.
No.
We don't.
We don't. And so this was discussed by the health, nurses and our health education teachers, in that it's, right now, to have to go, when you go in the nurse's office, you're not going to have to ask. There's going to be an area where there's information regarding sexual reproduction and different options around protection, and condoms is one of those, one of those things there. So you're not actually asking the adult for that, which we would say kind of defeats the purpose of providing condoms. There is some oversight to it, so you have that kind of balance. But the opt-out clause, you know, you could come in, someone would have to check the list. Are you on the list? That kind of thing. And so this, this policy does not include that. So there's two range, there's two ranges. When I talk to schools that have that policy, it's not truly enforced, where they have a list, but they're not always sure if they're able to monitor the students who are taking it on that list. So now you're changing it from available to behind closed doors until you have to ask for it. And so that kind of is not what the direction of the staff here wanted to go. So.
How are they going to handle the privacy of the list? Who's going to see who's taking, who took a half dozen?
Well, the privacy of the nurse's office, the nurses obviously are going to be. That would, they would, that would be in violation of their.
Or is it going to be out there on the counter when they walk in?
It's going to be in the, there's a central area when you walk in, kind of a sitting room would be in that area there.
So are they, can kids who walk in that completely?
Correct. So there's some oversight too, but it's not, depending on the busyness of the nurse's office, it's not the central station in there as well.
I mean, it's, there's so many states that you can't even, there's, what, 12 states in the country that you can't mention the word condom in the public school, that that's against the law. Let alone, and they, and they teach sex edu, they don't have sex, but, but they have individual teachers that cover the topics by, by, by teaching how to put a sock on a foot.
Are those, are those the states that have?
Those are the former Confederate states of America uniformly.
Does anybody else want to add anything to this?
I think we put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Bob, the public ask a question?
Sure. Is this specific to condoms, or are there other forms of protection like dental dams that are included in this?
That's a good question.
It is specific to condoms. There'll be information on other birth control things. But this is, right now, the state gives us condoms for free. We currently put them on a shelf. So this is, again, there's no cost to the school district on that, so there's not other. Yeah, maybe this is the first thing. There's a part of it.
Right.
You know, there is, the concerns of disruption to the school environment and that kind of thing is, you know, is it concerned in the sense of, you know, if they found in the hallway or whatnot? And so, you know, that's where, that's why the policy is one thing and the procedure is another one. So if there comes a group that are not using them appropriately in the sense, bad way of putting that, but are, you know, not, you know, are not handling it with the care of the subject, you know, then we'll have to change, we'll have to change how we do things.
Well, once you adopt the policies, it's a procedure. You say you're going to go a certain way.
No, that's procedures. The policy is just, is basically that we were, you're, you're passing a policy that is allowing the administration to, of the administration, with the administration to develop procedure to, to distribute.
So I'm going to put it in the handbook, so. It's going in the handbook also.
Under the healthcare, there'll probably be one line that says condoms are available in the nurse's office.
It's either that, Bob, or put 50 set machines in every boys' room. Does anyone have that?
I repaved the floor with.
That's why we don't put it in the foyer.
If they're, if they're, if they're easy to get, they're, you know, we use, the data shows they're used so much more often. If you have obstacles in obtaining them.
So my, my only, my only, kind of one thing on that is that, is that I didn't provide a lot of additional information because I didn't know where the committee, but the committee wants more information. I can bring in members from our health department or nursing staff to talk about that further, you know, that kind of thing. So, or you can, or you can contact me outside the meeting and I'll provide you whatever you need.
Can you give us a list of the other schools that you contacted before we vote on the next, next meeting?
I mean, would you like to know what the other schools are doing?
I just assume, I just assume they're doing worse than us, like in everything else.
Joe, did you have fun at the budget meeting? Condom doesn't have to spend as much money each year.
We happy campers tonight. We happy campers tonight.
Whately's going to have to pull the, pull the string this year. What the hell did you put in these things?
Do you have a procedure policy you want to talk about too?
That was the last, that was on that, just so that people had a general idea of how that would work.
And next month, you guys will be voting on this, so.
Then I'll be adding more MASC policies to be voted on next month. So there'll be kind of five at a time until, there's 30 of them, but some of them are just very, very minor changes. And so some of the minor ones, I may not bring forward. Some of them are removing pronouns in policies and that kind of thing. So we may just change the pronouns in the policy and then, you know, that kind of thing. So without having to do a re-vote.
Okay, reports. The only thing I may have for you, I may not be at the next meeting. I'm having my right knee replaced, so, so four weeks from now, I could maybe come, but we'll see how I feel. And if I can, I will. If not, be out of here in a half an hour. Anything from the collaborative?
Um, yeah, I've given, given a bunch of handouts after the meeting, but they're lengthy. So I've got them if you want them. We had a lengthy presentation on the 2019.
so I've got them if you want them. We had a lengthy presentation on the 2019 youth health data and regional coalition data, the survey that they do for like eighth and 10th and 12th graders and that sort of thing, and drug use.
How about condom use? Do they have condom use?
They probably do. So I've got a lengthy handout on that if you want information about the 2019 data. And again, they're encouraging people to use their website for professional development. They have curriculum available for vaping prevention, curriculum, curriculum for vaping prevention, and curriculum for universal prevention like violence prevention, alcohol, tobacco, vaping, other types of prevention, and that's it. So if you want any of that information, I can email it to you.
George, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
So I've got a, I've got two things. I emailed it to everybody, so if you need a hard copy, let me know after, after the meeting. So our school was awarded a grant of 25,500 in partnership with a number of other schools in the area, Amherst Pelham, Athel Royalston, Belcher Town, Franklin Tech, Delmonteque, Hampshire Regional, Mohawk, and Mahar. This is a social studies grant. This is, this will allow all of our eight through 12 teachers, social studies teachers, to register for the Teaching Civic Engagement course that's being funded by this grant. Each participant will also receive a 925 stipend and the text, we the teachers, I'm sorry, we the students and teachers, Teaching Democracy in a Social Studies Classroom. Goals of the course include developing and implementing a youth-led civic engagement project and fostering partnerships between district communities. So we're very happy, and thank you to Allison Walters and to Sarah Mitchell for that.
Nice.
Yeah. Also, we've recently opted into DASIS Seal of Biliteracy program. The State Seal of Biliteracy is an award provided by state-approved districts that recognizes high school graduates who attain high functional and academic levels of proficiency in English and a second language. The State's Seal of Biliteracy takes the form of a seal that appears in the transcript or diploma of the graduating senior and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers and for college admissions. So we're, we, we just opted into that, and we're hoping to get that rolling by the end of this year. So those are the two, the two things that I'm reporting on. Just a reminder, winter break is coming up. Sixth grade parent night is coming up on the 25th, and the eighth grade trip to Washington DC is going to be happening from February 24th through 20, the 28th.
Thank you. Any questions for George?
And 25,000 is our portion, correct?
That's what's going to be split. That's going to allow for the teachers to get a stipend.
No, Frontier gets 25,000.
No, it's collective. It's a 25,500, and it's split between all.
How many are we sending to it?
So we have, currently have four full-time social studies teachers. We have one long-term sub. I'm not sure if he's going to be a part of that.
So we're going to get 3,600 bucks, roughly.
But we're going to get to work at your schools as well for the teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But, but it's also phrased that way because we're the host school. We're the one who led the grant. We have others, we have others to join on, to spread the wealth, so to speak, and also help us get the grant. But the truth is that we were awarded and they were inviting those other participants, so.
So they stay rent.
It wasn't like we just jumped out with other people. They jumped out of us. So we got to give credit to people who put that, put out the grant.
Maybe we put a management fee.
I'll, I'll.
I'll ask for that, right?
Yes.
That's the 500.
Yeah, exactly. We're getting paid in condoms.
That's what Fox is saying.
That's great.
Serious, we have words tonight.
Nothing.
Well, do that, Dad.
Jared, Mr. Jared.
Second.
All in favor?